This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on September 19, 2023 at 6:01 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone recording the meeting? Okay, seeing none, I will note for the record, participating this evening are myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. If you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated August 29, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Think we'll wait till next week to review the minutes of September 12. Next on the agenda is recognition of Ella Zoo for the painted mural at Town Hall. Is Ella here? Hi, do you want to come up? Do you want to kick us off, Michelle, and explain?
Sure.
Ella, we have to go to the podium.
You want to go right to the podium?
I don't have a speed prepared.
No worries. So, the reason Ella is joining us this evening is she was kind enough to share her talent and expertise with the town and do a beautiful mural right outside on the, one of the rec barns as part of a Girl Scout Gold Award, which if you're not familiar with, it takes a lot of dedication and a tremendous amount of work. I don't know, Ella, if you want to add anything about what this process has been like, this project?
Yeah, I mean, is the microphone, like, working?
Yes.
Okay. I want to say that, like, the town has been, like, very helpful and supportive from getting from step A to step B, particularly, like, Will Ramsey and Tom Mayo have been really helpful, even like the ones who've been getting the painting onto the wall, so I want to thank them for that.
Excellent, excellent. And it's not just a painting. Well, you can see it on the screen for the people that are in the room. It's not just a beautiful piece of art, but also to illustrate the critical role of pollinators in our environment and how important that is, so thank you. So, the Select Board would like to present you with a certificate of recognition. It reads, "Presented to Ella Zoo in recognition of the hand-painted mural at Hingham Town Hall." The Select Board, on behalf of the Town of Hingham, hereby takes this opportunity to thank you for creating a bright and colorful mural of a pollinator garden at Hingham Town Hall. The eye-catching artwork illustrates the crucial role of pollinators in our environment and has transformed an underutilized outdoor space at Town Hall into a beautiful passageway used by many staff, children, and visitors. We applaud your efforts to complete this project as part of the Girl Scout Gold Award, and we wish you continued success in the years ahead. Signed by myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joseph Fisher, and William Ramsey, dated September 19, 2023. So, congratulations. Thank you so much. Would you like to take a picture with your family up here? Come on up.
You'll have the seal behind you.
Yeah, come right here. Yep, come around. Welcome, Ella's family. Congratulations. Congratulations. Sure. Do one more.
We good?
All right, ready?
Excellent. Excellent. Congratulations again. Thank you. Thanks for coming again. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider the request of LSF Hingham LLC, 96 Derby Street, for a change of DBA. Do we have Donna Cruz joining us? Hi, how are you? Do you want to explain the application in the that's before us?
Yeah. Yeah, so my name is Donna Cruz. I'm a town legal with the license fee, and we are petitioning to change our DBA from legal sea bar to legal seafood, and we have no other changes being made.
Okay, excellent. And it looks like the application is complete and in order. Do you have any concerns, Michelle?
Nope.
Okay. Joe, any questions or concerns?
I assume you made the appropriate filings with the state?
Yeah, so it has to first go through your Bureau for law, and then that will go to the state.
Great. Okay, great. No questions.
Bill?
No questions. Everything looks like it's in order.
Excellent. I'm ready to take a motion. Oh, sorry. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Not yet.
I make a motion to approve the request of LSF Hingham LLC, 98 Derby Street, Unit 325, Hingham, Massachusetts, for a change of DBA from legal sea bar to legal seafood in accordance with the application for a change business entity information filed with the Town of Hingham on June 14, 2023, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Donna, for joining us. The renovations look great. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Minuteman Trucks doing business as Allegiance Trucks for three vehicles for the Public Works Department: 2024 Pro 60 Rear-Front Flatbed, 2024 GVW Catch Basin Cleaner, and 2024 Snowfighter Sept-Up Truck with Sander and Plow. Hi, Kathy?
Hi.
Do we have Randy with us as well?
We do. Yes.
Okay. Oh, I see. Oh, hi, Randy. Sorry. Good, how are you?
I'm doing okay.
All right. Do you want to explain what this is about?
So, these are three trucks. They use in different divisions, but the first one is a Ramon Flatbed. It's going to replace our bucket truck, number 20. That is in the train park department. That's for the $262,867.66 left. The next one is the Catch Basin Cleaner. Oh, and they're all International Harvester trucks. And that one is used in the highway department and used pretty much on a daily basis. And we need it for the Phase 2, stow water, and clean the basins and whatnot. That one's $309,991.89. And the third one is a six-wheel dump truck with a sander and plow, and that will go into a bale fleet. That's also in highway. And we do have the money in the budget, in the capital budget. And that price is $250,664.22.
Excellent. Kathy, do you want to add anything?
Just that we're using the MAPC contract that they do on behalf of the Greater Boston Police Council, so it's a cooperative contract.
Okay.
That we're a part of.
And all of this was already included in the FY24 capital budget, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you expect to have the trucks by the end of 2024?
I hope so.
Okay. How realistic is that?
It is realistic. They said it's about a year out, so I think we'll get it by the end of 2024.
Okay. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a couple, Randy, but thank you for putting this together. On the first one, you said it was replacing a bucket truck. Is that right?
Yeah.
So, what will happen to that vehicle?
It'll be traded in.
Any sense of what the trade-in value will be?
I do not, and so when we're about to purchase the truck, they won't give us a value and stick to it when the truck comes in because we don't know when we're going to get it.
Sure. So, but the $262 figure is the gross figure, and then what you actually pay may be less based on the trade-in value. Is that fair?
It could be, yes.
Well, it will be unless the trade-in value is zero.
Yes.
Okay. And for these three vehicles, what is the useful life of them? What are we expecting?
We're expecting 10 years out of them. It's, when I started out 19 years ago, the replacement on these trucks was 36 years.
Yep.
And that didn't seem realistic to me budget-wise and vehicle-wise. The problem with is when they go beyond 10 years, they start to cost a lot to keep repaired, especially during the winter when we need them.
Yep. That actually was going to go to my last question, which is what sort of vehicle warranty goes along with them so that at least there'll be some period of time when, if something breaks down, it's covered?
We have, two of the trucks have three-year warranty, and there's one truck that has two-year warranty.
Okay. And I assume those warranties are standard for these vehicles?
Yes.
Great. Well, I appreciate, I know that this is in the budget and that the town does need these vehicles, so you've answered all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, any questions or comments?
I was going to ask about the life expectancy, but Joe beat me to it. But I did want to note, you know, it's great that we're finally addressing capital needs within DPW. For years, we have been deferring the buying of trucks that you needed for years, Randy. So, this is great that we're finally getting some of these met, and I know that you must really appreciate the fact they're coming now, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for members of the public?
Anyone in the public want to ride shotgun?
You're auctioning off rides.
So, I'll move to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Minuteman Truck doing business as Allegiance Trucks for three vehicles for the Public Works Department: 2024 Pro 60 Rear-Mount Flatbed, 2024 GVW Catch Basin Cleaner, and 2024 Snowfighter Spec Dump Truck with Sander and Plow in an amount not to exceed $823,523.77.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Downtown Hingham Traffic Calming Measures Update, which I think is probably the reason most of you are here. So, thank you for coming and participating. As many of you know, this has been an ongoing discussion for some time. Certainly, safety is of the highest priority of this board. The focus of this meeting is really to hear feedback. We are committed to the public process with any changes happening around towns, and specifically tonight, we're talking about downtown. So, in that, in spirit of that commitment, we want to hear from you, and we will certainly be listening this evening. As a little bit of background, Town Meeting last April, 2023, voted for 25-mile-per-hour speed limits in thickly settled districts and business districts. On June 6, the Select Board voted to implement that, and the permitted signs that are enforceable, which are the orange with the black writing, have been installed in downtown as well as the other neighborhoods that were approved. The Select Board asked for the traffic calming plan in downtown Hingham. That plan was presented at last week's Select Board meeting on September 12. And just for a little bit of background, I know traffic calming is not necessarily a term everybody's familiar with. Traffic calming is a system that utilizes design strategy and physical adjustments to reduce traffic speeds for the sake of safety and accessibility. So, that's really the main point. Those are things like speed hubs, different types of signage, barriers, really resulting in lower speeds and increased safety, and that's our focus. So, for tonight, I'm going to ask JR Frye, the Town Engineer, to walk through updates since last week's meeting, including some speed data that's been collected, analysis from a consultant that we're working with, things that are kind of in progress, as well as some of the options that we're considering from a historical perspective. I will then ask my colleagues, Joe and Bill, to share their comments and questions, and then I will open it up for public comment. Since there are many people participating in the room, as well as Zoom, I will ask you to please limit your comments to three minutes each, in hopes that everybody gets an opportunity to share their unique perspective. We'll try to share new information and different information so we have the board walks away from this with a holistic view of all the different points and issues and suggestions. I will say, if you're willing and able, please raise your hand in person or digitally if you hear something that you agree with to show support, and we will make a note of that. So, instead of feeling like you have to repeat a comment or something that's already been said, if you want to show support, we will record that in the public record. That just helps us move through the conversation, but also understand how many people feel the same way. So, with that, JR, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Liz. So, if Michelle could bring up the telephones quickly? Thank you. And if we can just pop back, yeah. So, as we discussed last week, we can see the generalized plan of elements of traffic calming that we're looking at. We have placed the 25-mile-per-hour speed signs as shown on the main throughways entering downtown. And you can see the locations, the four locations where we've installed speed feedback signs. Last week, we also discussed that we are continuing to work on a, an engineering design for the Fountain Square area that may adjust traffic flow and improve the intersection capabilities there. And you can see that little, kind of a black flag that was placed at the North Street and Main Street intersection as a kind of a placeholder for a possible potential speed type table. Anything like that, though, at this point is kind of in our out-year considerations as we evaluate the effectiveness of the two pieces which we have implemented, which is establishing a 25-mile-per-hour speed limit and installing some speed feedback signs where we see kind of significant traffic flow velocity. Next slide, please. So, as all looked to last week's meeting, we brought in the Nessman Associates quickly to begin reviewing specifically the speed feedback locations and downtown speeds generally. So, what they did was they went at each of the existing feedback sign locations and took, and took speed readings for approaching vehicles and then what the speed of those vehicles is when they're at the sign. Not necessarily all the same vehicle. So, they took, you know, 40 speed readings ahead of the sign, and then they took 40 speed readings at the sign, but they don't necessarily represent the same 40 vehicles when they were doing that. And then they also attempted to take speed readings on North Street in that Main to Central corridor. In that specific corridor, the speeds were so low when they were attempting to take the readings that they were unable to register on the radar gun. So, a big reason for that is each of those intersections, North at Main and North at Central, have a lot of complex movements that are occurring, where you have parallel part of traffic. You have people making left turns coming out of Main and Central, and people making left turns off of North Street to enter Main and Central. You may also have backups from the intersections at South and Main and South and Central that impact people's free movement to leave that North Street intersection. In addition to all of that, you have pedestrian traffic, which we want to encourage, as well as occasionally bicycling traffic that can impact free movement through that corridor. So, I wanted to kind of highlight that while while the speeds that they were measuring, they weren't really able to register them on their radar gun, but you still can have a perception of generally higher speeds. And a lot of that relates to impatience. So, it relates to driver behavior. Impatience, drivers feeling the need to advance very quickly from a stop in order to get their place in the moving traffic, in the traffic flow. So, I think sometimes when people talk about some elements of the perception of speed issues downtown, when they're talking about that particular corridor, I think a lot of it has to do with the quick assertive movements rather than absolute speed. And there's a perception of dangerous driver behavior. So, if we can, as the rest of this states, we also went through, we downloaded the statistical data that's collected by the speed feedback signs, and then we are in the process of reviewing poll options, as well as the, Andrew Young has taken the lead in reviewing other communities' approaches for how they handle this type of signage within historic areas. Obviously, we're reviewing feedback that's been submitted by citizens, and we are working with our consultants to review potential alternative locations for the speed feedback signs, if there are specific locations where they're currently installed that we believe for one reason or another we need to revisit. So, next slide, please. And I can quickly go over some of the data that we received. As you review this data, one of the things that you should note is that at three of the locations, we saw between a 1 and 2 mile-per-hour reduction in the approach speed. Now, the part of the way to look at it is that not only did the person slow down a marginal amount, but really, part of what we were looking for there was that they not continue to increase their speed as well. So, for the North Street sign, which is just west of Fountain Square or the Lincoln Street intersection, those vehicles are approaching roughly within the posted, or the not posted speed limit, the legal speed limit, which is 30 miles an hour, as you leave the Daxter Street intersection and head towards downtown. At the crosswalk in front of roughly 170 north, I believe, I'm sorry, 200 north, at the crosswalk in front of 200 north, that's where it changes to 25 mile-an-hour zone. And so, the vehicles are entering the 25 mile-an-hour zone as they're being, as their speed is being measured by the radar sign. So, that's kind of the context. And as you can see, what you have there is vehicles that were traveling at the legal speed limit, and then now they're reducing their speed, entering a lower speed limit area, and they're approaching the legal speed limit in that space. Similarly, you see a similar condition in South Street, where vehicles are roughly traveling about the legal speed limit when they, as they approach the sign. And then, once the sign is activated and they're slowing down, they're slowing down and towards the legal speed limit, which is at the sign, which is 25 miles per hour. At the Main Street sign, that's where we see the most significant effect right now. In part, that's because the vehicles traveling northbound on Main Street are, they come through that corridor, I'll characterize it briskly. And so, as you can see, they, the average speed is well elevated compared, or the 85th percentile speed is well elevated compared to the legal speed limit, which is 25 miles per hour. So, the approach speed is about 34 miles per hour, and you see a 5 mile-per-hour drop as they enter the 25 mile-per-hour zone. So, that's where we saw the most significant drop. So, I think that's worth noting about that particular location, is that the approach speeds are high, and it's definitely getting drivers' attention, and they're slowing down to something that's much closer to the legal speed limit at that location. And finally, the North Street westbound sign, so this would be the one roughly at 25 North Street, just after the Cafe Tosca. In that one, you can see that the approach speeds, the 85th percentile approach speed is still just at 25 miles per hour. That is just about at the closest to the 3A intersection that we would want to locate the, any type of speed feedback sign. Because at that point, that's where they're, that's where the vehicles are actually approaching their, the legal speed limit. And we're trying to calm them down from any continued acceleration so that they'll maintain that speed or lower going through the downtown business district. If you move that sign further forward, two things will happen. The vehicles, as they approach the sign, will, they'll either register, they either won't register a speed because the minimum speed that will be registered is nine miles per hour, or it'll be on the very low end, so up to, say, 15 miles per hour. And that's not going to give them the feedback that they need to take their foot off the accelerator. And so, that's why the, where it's currently placed is ID. And so that's why, um, the, where it's currently placed is ideal from the sense of slowing down, uh, vehicles entering the square. Um, if we were to look at some other locations, they would probably be further into the historic district, further towards downtown. Um, but we are, we are looking at all of those options, uh, to make sure that, that we've got everything optimally located. Okay?
Excellent. Well, thank you, JR, and thank you to Sergeant Kilroy and the Traffic Committee as well. You all reacted to our concern about speed and safety in downtown, uh, with a, with a quick solution and we certainly appreciate that. Um, but we will hear feedback and, and continue to evaluate and assess over the next week and probably several weeks. Um, did, do you want to present anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay. Joe, do you have questions or comments?
Um, so I, I think the focus of the meeting, really, I'd like to be hearing from the folks who've showed up, so I'm gonna try to be brief. Um, but first, JR, just thank you for your work, your efforts. Safety is definitely a priority and there's no one sitting at this table that thinks that we should be compromising safety. Uh, the question really is the best way to do it, uh, whether or not we've identified the appropriate methods and whether or not those methods are, are being implemented at appropriate locations. Um, so, uh, to the extent that we hear and we've already heard from residents stressing the importance of safety, uh, I don't think that's in dispute. Uh, it's really, uh, what's, what are the appropriate methods and, uh, where, where are the appropriate locations? I wanted to pick up on what you said about the placement of the sign on North Street. Um, I'm familiar with it. That sign is across the street from a building that I have on North Street. And so I, I've seen it implemented. Um, I am not, well, I guess, like, I, I heard your, your explanation that you wanted, am I correct, that you wanted vehicles to be able to basically be accelerating and then their, their speed would register on the sign? Is that the essence of, of the placement?
We want to, we want to catch them where they've had an opportunity, sufficient opportunity to accelerate and reach what would generally be a safe speed. Um, we, if we put it too close, it's not actually giving feedback because they aren't, um, responding to any type of stimuli that caps their activity.
Yep. So I, I'll just suggest for you that you look at some other studies, um, because I did a quick look, the Virginia Department of Transportation, their direction is to place these signs at the beginning of the street section identified for traffic calming in order to reinforce the posted speed limit for vehicles entering the, uh, entering the section of street designated for traffic calming. So there are at least others who say, do it at the beginning, not after people may have accelerated. Uh, so I just hope that you look at, um, other considerations in terms of the placement of, of those signs.
Sure.
The, um, in terms of options other than signs, um, what have you looked at? And I'll, I'll just ask about some specific things. Um, there are non-intrusive signs, um, like pavement markings, um, ways of narrowing streets, for example, um, pay, marking bike lanes so that it's a narrower, uh, passage. There are vertical, uh, horizontal and narrowing devices like speed humps, speed lumps, speed tables, raised intersections, things like that. Have you looked at those and determined that the signs are the way to go?
So we are, we were willing to consider some of these additional, um, uh, traffic calming elements. Um, when North Street was reconfigured a, a little over a decade ago, a lot of the, um, lane striping elements, uh, were considered at that time, but due to the relative narrow configuration of the roadway, along with the desire to maintain, um, uh, parallel parking spaces, uh, especially for, through the commercial district, um, it, you're, you are very much constrained with, uh, attempting to redistribute that space. Um, for example, uh, we couldn't really put in any type of a bike lane, uh, through the, through this space where you wouldn't have, uh, vehicle doors routinely, um, interrupting, that there's, there would be no free form of travel for that. Where we do have the, uh, the section width to make those changes, we're actively looking at that as well. There's a section of North Street, um, just west of Fountain Square where we will be re-striping the center line and adding a very wide shoulder on a piece of that. Uh, and part of that is in preparation for, uh, our intention to construct a sidewalk along the north side of that street where it doesn't currently exist. So, um, there are, there are additional elements that are always in play, uh, things like the speed tables. Um, they may find a place through the corridor. Um, we, those are a little bit more complicated from an engineering perspective, just to make sure that we make, that operationally it works for our cloud drivers and, uh, that all of the grades work so that we are able to, uh, either maintain or improve upon existing ADA compliance as well as, um, make sure that all the drainage works around these facilities. Uh, when you change grade like that, you can cut off, uh, drainage from where it was intended to go, or where it was originally intended to go. So as we evaluate, um, the effectiveness of what we have already done, and if we determine that more needs to be done, then absolutely we'll continue to look at, uh, what those, what those, uh, steps are.
Yep. I mean, as you are looking, um, I am, been advocating, uh, for improved bicycle safety and to the extent that the roads can be configured, striped, or in any way improved to, uh, increase the safety for bikers, that would be very much appreciated. To what extent did you consider historic aspects of, uh, of the locations when you were placing signs?
Um, in terms of the locations, we were focused on putting them in the right location from a public safety perspective. Uh, we were not, um, specifically considering, uh, any historic implications in the, in the sense of the actual location of the sign.
So often, um, there is more than one location that serves public safety. Um, and so to the extent that there are, there's more than one location, it would be helpful if other factors were considered, uh, specifically historic issues. Is that something that, uh, you can, you can consider?
Uh, yeah, it, I, it is something that we can consider. It's, um, it is a, yes, we'll, we'll consider it.
Great. Um, nothing else for this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Great, thank you. Um, I know, I know we have Sergeant Kilroy on the line. Sergeant Kilroy is, is the Traffic Sergeant. Uh, Sergeant Kilroy, can you, I, I, my understanding that you went out there, um, and made some observations over the weekend, I believe you had your radar gun with you. Can you speak to any observations that you made and the effectiveness of what we put in place, or what had been put in place in the downtown corridor?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you. Um, since, since the 12th, uh, we basically have, uh, some more directed controls downtown, if you would. Um, our traffic officers have conducted approximately 12, um, directed, focused, focused enforcement downtown. Um, during those 12, uh, different, uh, time slots, just very randomly selected, um, they have reported that everything is, uh, seems to be, uh, well, well within or under the speed limits. Um, I know they've only issued, I think, two red warnings out of those 12, uh, like JR had mentioned. One of them was on Main Street approaching Elm Street. Um, and actually I believe they were both in that location. Um, I was down there on Sunday and again, um, just observing traffic and I did have the opportunity to run some radar and everybody was well within compliance. As I looked through all the assignments from my officers, the majority of, uh, all the comment sections say all speeds well under 25, average speed 26, uh, no violations observed, average speed 20. Um, so it appears as though, um, these signs have made a, going to be improvement in just a short amount of time.
Sergeant Kilroy, thank you. Thank you very much. And JR, thank you for your work. I want to begin by thanking JR for his efforts. I want to, uh, thank obviously Sergeant Kilroy, Chief Jones, uh, want to thank Andrea Young, who'd been involved with the process, have had several conversations with her, also Michelle Art and Tom. Also want to thank Ashley Thomas from the Hingham Police Department. Um, she's been very helpful to me in researching this issue over the past week. I do want to note that, um, a couple of things, I agree with Joe. I think we could, we should continue to look at the process here. We're gonna do so over the next week before we think we make a final decision. Uh, I am very much in favor of looking at, uh, the placement of the signs and whether or not we can do that better. Uh, we'll know, we'll take a hard look at the one on North Street. Uh, we had some, you know, complaint about that. I don't love the fact that the sign in front of Old Ship Church. Um, I like this, I like the fact that it's one on Main Street, but I think maybe we should, um, look at maybe getting a better position for that sign as well. Um, I also think we should look at, continue to look at the style and subs, the style and size of the signs. Andrea Young has, uh, been very helpful to me and I think to the entire board on offering some alternatives that are used in other, uh, historic downtowns, which I think we should probably have a conversation about at some point to see if we want to improve, um, how they look. But I do want to remind people why we're having this conversation this evening. Um, I have a picture here, I can't show it to everybody, but it's a picture of a Toyota Tacoma pickup truck that crashed into the front of Square Cafe. All right? That's Exhibit One. I have a picture of a white Jeep that, motor vehicle crash that rolled over in front of the old ordinary on September 5th, 2017. Two days later, there was a, a post on a, um, very popular social media, media site in sound, two days later, after this motor vehicle crash, a resident said she was just almost run down at a crosswalk in the middle of downtown. Exhibit Three is a picture of another pickup truck that was driven into the Fruit Center not many years ago. In addition to the exhibits I'm gonna offer into the record today, I also want to note that, um, a motor vehicle has driven into the Samuel Lincoln House, this is owned by Frank and Nancy Mellon, on North Street. Not once, but twice. This has been pre, I have, have a picture of the crash at Square Cafe. To my understanding, that, that has happened on multiple occasions as well. We got a letter the, this afternoon from the owner of Zona Hear Salon downtown Hingham. He informed us that there's been two motor vehicle crashes into his store in the downtown area. I personally saw about two or three years ago, a vehicle traveling eastbound on North Street crossed a median and literally drive into the stone wall located at 53 North Street. And tragically, as we all know, there was a fatal accident at the corner of Beale Street and North Street just last month. You know, folks, motor vehicles driving into buildings on a regular basis is not normal. And, um, I know we're gonna continue to talk about how we're gonna address this problem, but I do think this board, it's time for this board to take some action and to address the problem. You know, there was one comment last week, well, the police department should just park a cruiser downtown, issue more citations. In the past 10 years, the police department has issued 10,000, 10,000 citations in the downtown corridor. Uh, I asked Chief Jones, the leadership of the department, Sergeant Kilroy, even had a conversation with Chief Perino many years ago about, you know, why can't we park a cruiser downtown? It would certainly slow people down. The response I got was, "The day shift is so busy responding to motor vehicle accidents in other parts of town that we can't, we can't keep one there for more than an hour or so." Also, there's just so much going on to, to dedicate that resource down there. But again, 10,000 citations in 10 years is, it shows me that the police department is trying to take efforts to do that. So again, I am gonna look, uh, over the next week and want to hear from everybody here tonight. Thank you all for coming. Um, so obviously, I will search for potential compromise and see, again, if we can look at the location of the current size signs and make things better for people. Um, also the style of the signs, but I think as my colleague said, and I agree with him, don't intend to compromise public safety. So with that, I would yield to the show.
Excellent. Thank you, Bill. Okay. I will open it up for public comment and we'll try to, we'll try to stay on track here. Um, I'll first have people in the room and then we'll go to Zoom. So if you'd like to speak, go ahead. Mark, if you, and if you don't mind coming up to the podium and just stating your name and address for the record, um, this way people here and on Zoom can hear you.
Thank you. Mark Bonagario, 10 Cliff Road. I appreciate, first of all, the work that the Traffic Committee has done, um, over the years. Just a little background, a few years back, when a child got hit in a crosswalk near Plymouth River, another resident in town formed a page on Facebook, um, that I got actively involved in and the Traffic Committee, we reached out to them, they were incredibly responsive and we heard from dozens and maybe even 100 people voicing their concerns about safety in town. And it's not just downtown, it is everywhere. Um, other social media pages now have continual comments, some just, I think, a week ago about a woman who said that she almost got hit in a crosswalk. Another woman responded and said that she actually had been hit in a crosswalk downtown. This isn't an uncommon occurrence, it's happening way too often. I think if anybody drives around town, you see it and hearing people as they're on Traffic Committee calls, um, they're upset and they're more upset about their kid's safety and maybe even their parents' safety than anything else. I appreciate the fact that, hey, maybe this is a different location for some of these signs, you know, based on what the Traffic Committee finds scientifically to be the right spot. My concern is that it's a historic district. Every building you're gonna put in front of is probably gonna be historic, so it's tough to find the compromise as to who wants that, but it's needed here in the town. And I think you're gonna need that, as you heard from, you mentioned about Sergeant Kilroy, there is a need to have greater police presence. And if it means we have to have overtime, more officers, and we have to pay for it, I'm in favor of doing it. So I would just urge the board to say, um, please keep the signs, find the right location, find the right traffic calming measures, but wholly in support of this because I think we need to put people before places. Um, I think that needs to be our first priority, the people of the town. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Go ahead. Michelle, are you keeping track of, is Heidi able to keep track of who's kind of raising their hand?
Um, probably not. She's not here.
And how many? Not here. How many?
I'll try to, but she's not in the room.
I know, she's, okay.
Good evening. Joe Phalen, 506 Main Street. Um, I think the chair made it, uh, clear at the beginning of the meeting that I don't think there's anybody in the room who disputes the decision made to reduce the speed limit. And with Mr. Ramsey's conclusion that that's needed to keep us safe in the downtown area, as Mr. Fisher pointed out, I think the issue is how this came about with no input from all of the various interested parties. Various commissions and citizens groups in this town worked very hard to maintain the look, the nature, the feel of the town. Uh, I for one, live a mile up from my house on Main Street. I, I work a mile up and I take a left out of my driveway, but I take a right two or three times a week to go down, go around the harbor, go by Stars, come up North Street, come back up Main Street, just to remind myself how lucky we are to live here. And we're, and, and the way it's been maintained is with the input of all the citizens of the town. And I think we're not disputing that where these signs were placed would slow people down. That's the kind of information we're getting since the last meeting when these, when the, um, the experts were hired to help us out. Yes, you put a sign, it's gonna slow people down where it is. The question is, what, where to put those signs if those are the best measures to take? Are those the best measures to take? Are there alternatives? Are there alternative measures to take? And what would this, when the decisions were made, what were they based on? We're hearing the explanation now that they're already there and the effects that they're having now that they're already there. But the issue is, who made the decision to put it right there and what was that based on? And were these other considerations made? And apparently, based on the questions that Mr. Fisher asked, they weren't taken into consideration, only public safety. And again, wherever you put the sign, it's going to slow people down. So any observations that we make now really don't address why other considerations weren't made. Were there other alternatives that are just as good for location, for type of mitigation? And what we're hearing is, no, there wasn't. So I would urge the board to look at it further, open the process back up so there can be some public input and that we can have all the considerations weighed before final decisions are made.
Madam Chair, if I can just, I'm not sure that I said that there was not public input or that there was not adequate public input. My view is that we need to have the members here, people here, providing input. So hopefully, I was not misconstrued. There was a lot of public input. And quite frankly, this is, this process has been going on for a while. This board, along, for example, with the zoning board, when we were looking at opening up restaurants during, during the heat of, the peak of COVID to make sure that the restaurants survived, we all looked at traffic safety, making sure that there was proper protection for those people who are seated outside, making sure there were ballasts. So this board has looked and has received public input for years in terms of the importance of public safety and making sure that actions are taken. And I believe that the procedures that have gone so far, that have happened so far are necessary. And I think we need to make sure that we continue to improve. So to the extent that signs need to be relocated, reconfigured, or perhaps options considered, that needs to go forward. But that is not a reflection of the fact that there's not been public input and that we've not taken seriously the comments that members of the public have provided up to now.
Yes, thank you. And in addition to the public comments, I just want to say that it was based on an engineering study and public safety, from a public safety perspective. It was a quick interim solution that was, you know, an answer to the issue that we saw. But, you know, tonight, we are taking a step back to consider what other options are there, considering the residents, the businesses, as well as historic. Do you, can you make, can you, do you want to sit here? Is that easier?
You can sit right here at the table if it's easier. You just need to be at a microphone. So I'm Debbie Hardy and I live at Terry Granahan's house on 25 North Street. I've lived there for 20 years and I think from the time that I moved in, I've been complaining to the police, the traffic police. We sit out every morning and it's like a speedway, primarily on the other side, coming down into the rotary. The average speed is 40 to 45, sometimes way higher than that. I first want to ask, what happened to the signs that said 15 in each direction, right by Stars and on the other end by Talbets? From the time I moved there to just recently, possibly like a couple of weeks ago, were 15 mile an hour signs. And three years ago, when we had COVID and it was, we did a Zoom meeting and we were promised all these walkways, I asked about, you know, well, it says 15, so now it's 25? They said, oh, no, that's just suggested speed limit, suggested. Okay, so when we went from 15 to 25, and I watched every day how, I don't understand how anybody's not been killed going from Cafe Toskas to Toskas. You know, everybody that comes to my house has to park on North Street. They can't even get out of their car. I'm on crutches, I've been on crutches the last 10 years. I could never go across my street, ever. When they're coming around that corner, well, cars have gotten hit, when they come around that corner, they're going way higher than 45. It's crazy. So first, they should have put it on the other side because that, and in the morning at 8 o'clock or before that, when all the trucks are coming in for the food and the alcohol for all the restaurants, then the cars just speed around them because they're in a hurry to get to work. My last meeting I came to, or was on Zoom, I just gave up because they promised there was going to be two lit walkways by Hennessy's and then one down by Cafe Toskas and Toskas. That was three years ago. The scariest thing going outside my, I will never cross the street. I can't cross the street. And I've lived there for 20 years. I think people don't even think that anybody lives down that end, you know? We're the last house, but people live down there, you know? A lot of people, it's, it's gotten so busy and it's cra, and the restaurants are doing great, it's all good, but we have to put some kind of, I even, at that time, suggested just not that high up elevated walkways like they have in Newport on Broadway. They have probably eight of them going down. The first one's a little bit higher, but the other one, and everybody stops and everybody stops to look if somebody is going to walk across. It's not an eyesore, they're only up about this much, but it's a walkway and they're beautiful. And it's a huge difference in the traffic. And my biggest complaint is it's never been monitored. Like I've gone to the police station, I've emailed them over and over and over, I've gone and sat with the traffic department. I never see anybody down, they should give me a gun. I would get them so much money every morning. Oh, my God.
We need it.
I just, I just feel like, okay, the signs are great, but they didn't take into account anything. And I just really gave up three years ago because those walkways were promised. They went everywhere else and I know it's important by the schools, but somebody's going to get killed. I know it, I know it. The worst walkway is between Cafe, it's, everybody's walking across there, whether it's the restaurant people or people out, you know, it's, it's just really scary. And so we went from 15 to 25, that's okay, you know? But I just think, police presence, it hasn't been there. And so what they did was just kind of abrupt. I, one even moved in across the street, I don't know if he's there anymore, but he assured me, you know, he'd have his car parked out front and that would help, but I don't think he's there anymore. But I've never seen anybody like taking a parking spot across and, and really monitor the speed. So 45 is the average.
Thank you.
Clark Frazier, 50, Bonnie Brier Circle. Couple of things, because I'm a bit of a ringer. I was on Traffic Committee, that's how I first met Bill Ramsey for three years, and we were discussing this then. Is this turned on?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. I went out today, because I come down just about every day from my house to the post office and quite often have to cross. That crosswalk is really unsafe. Latest episode was, I stepped off by Hennessy behind, I was behind an SUV and a bicycle almost ran over my feet. The bicyclists are paying zero attention to traffic rules, so despite we have traffic safety, they're making it less safe. But I could go intersection by intersection, there's a problem by Stars. I think the crosswalk is in the wrong place. It should be on the other side where you can see it because people get off the bus and you can't see them. The crosswalk in front of Hennessy's, I don't believe can be safe even if it has a flashing, unless Main Street has a four-way stop. And the reason, we looked at a four-way stop and it didn't, they talked about safety. I'm not worried about safety. What a four-way stop would do is it'd slow down the speed of the cars for the mid-block crosswalk. And I don't, can't think of any other thing that could do it. I walked around and I looked at the speed limit signs, a couple of them. I walked all the way down to and around the block and came back and I had not even noticed the one coming eastbound on North Street and I've driven by it multiple times. Now, I think the Traffic Committee is too timid. They're overloaded with town employees, there are not enough citizens on it. The 25 mile an area ought to be much larger than it is because in order to make that variable speed sign work, you could put it somewhere else, you need a 25 mile an hour limit right at the traffic light. And that 25 mile an hour limit should extend until far enough down North Street to you're past all the curves. Same thing on South Street. You can't get out of Forget Me Not Lane right now because of the curve, so that should be within 25 mile an hour zone and all of the hill behind it and a lot of the backstreets. So I think right now, the proposal is too timid. The sign, I took a picture of it today, didn't say anything about speed limit because in truth, the speed limit there is 30. And if the speed limit doesn't start until the intersection with Station Street, that's too far into the square. And if you move the speed limit out so you can have a fixed sign right at the corner at the various places remote from the square, then you can put the variable speed signs where you want, where they'd be most effective. Right now, people barely can get up to 25 miles an hour. So when I walked out today and looked at the one on the other side, I saw about 10 cars go through and only one was going below 25. All the others were going faster. The other last thing I'll say, there's, I could go on for half an hour about this, but, was the fact that early in the day, if I come down in the post office, 8 o'clock before the stores open, people come barreling through at 35 and 40 miles an hour. And I don't know why we're not capturing this. And sometimes, if you look at the old, I saw a report, if you look at The Outlier, somebody goes through there 50 or 60 miles an hour and say, "Where are the police?" Or, "What can we do about it?" So I think it's a problem that could be helped, but I think right now, I haven't seen any of the statutory 17C signs yet, the yellow and white ones that are called for in the legislation. I'd like to see one of those right by Stars. I'd like to see either the bus stop moved a little bit or the crosswalk moved away from the bus stop and then we could just keep going. The last thing I'll say is, I'd like to see the spaces, parking spaces striped so that if there's any half a space, that half a space is right by the crosswalk in the traffic direction to move so you're not always having to step out from behind an SUV. No, thank you. Also, I just want to say one other thing.
All right, then I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
We'll try not to dig any more holes in North Street in my current job, as sewer commission.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Clark.
And then I have my eye on you.
Thank you. Rebecca Sharp, I'm at 35 High Street in Hingham. And believe it or not, I've lived in this town for almost half a century. Having said that, I think I'd like to follow suit and kind of go intersection by intersection, but just preface this by saying, I am coming to this late. I found out about this meeting maybe a week's time ago and I don't already know what's been discussed, so I will apologize ahead of time if this is like way old news. But if we were to take this intersection by intersection, and I'm going to preface this by saying, have stop signs have really been talked about? Because I think we all agree in this room that speed is the overall issue. And if speed is the overall issue, how do you really slow down a car? You get it to come to complete stop and then has to start again. And depending on how much legroom it has till it gets to its next stop, it really can't go that fast. I mean, in theory. So having said that, if you can follow with me, and I'll keep this brief, but intersection through intersection, if you're up at Old Ship and you're coming down Main Street heading into the downtown area, there's Elm Street. If we were to put, I know it's an arbitrary spot for a stop sign, but if there was a stop sign in front of, on Main Street, in front of Old Ship where Elm Street is, even though it's not technically needed, that is going to slow down the traffic heading into the downtown area. I'll take it from the outskirts. Central Street is already loaded with stop signs, so I don't need to address that. Coming from CVS, I agree that corner coming around South Street, it's a pretty wicked corner and they're pretty fast. But once they get in front of stop, in front of CVS and the community center, there is a stop sign. So those areas coming down, other than the Main Street, Elm Street one that I suggested, coming into town that way, you're pretty well slowed down. Coming from North Street, so let's say the Lincoln Corridor or North Street from, I guess that would be Beale Street, one of those two directions, you're stopped when you hit Lincoln, if you have come down Lincoln, when you enter North Street. But you can come all the way from Hershey down Lincoln at a pretty good speed. So at that intersection, hopefully you're all following, where we've got Talbets, St. Paul's, the Square Cafe, there are a lot of out of town drivers who almost expect it to be a three-way stop and hesitate and don't quite understand why it's not a three-way stop. And people who live in town get furious. They lay on their horns because it's not and they're like, "Just keep going." But it's almost like it doesn't make sense to keep going. It feels like, "I want to stop, we should be stopping and giving, you know, right of way to people as they enter the intersection in the proper order." So having said that, why is that not a stop sign? In front of St. Paul's, directly across from the Square Cafe, hopefully you can follow me, and then in front of Talbets, again, across from like the parking lot kitty corner from North Street Church and St. Paul's, making it like a three-way stop. And then as you leave the area, we already made that road a one-way, which I apologize, Buttonwood Books was there, I can't think of the name of it. Anybody?
South Street.
Yes, I guess that's South Street. That's already been made a one-way. So you can only come up that. And then the other place I would add a stop is at the top of Station Street. So when you're coming on North Street, because there's already a stop at the top of North. So again, the idea is you're coming off of 3A, you're stopping at the top of Station Street. You're going as far as St. Paul's, you're stopping again. And then you're either going to take a left and go up Central, or you're going to take a right and either go down Lincoln or continue on North. I mean, that is what's going to slow traffic. So I would say it's like four or five different stop signs. Stop sign to me is not intrusive to the historic value of the town. It doesn't affect anything and I think it's really the only way to get people to slow down and stop.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all I got. Go ahead.
I'm Trish McAlire and I'm at 14 Park Circle. And I'm here on behalf of Old Ship Church. And I just want to thank, thank the select people and the town for taking on this issue. I can say as a resident for over 20 years, it definitely is something that we need to contend with. Our concerns particularly are about the placement of the sign in front of Old Ship Church, which the select people have already, Mr. Fisher and Mr. Ramsey have already spoken about, particularly the consideration of the historic nature of the, you know, the area in particular of Old Ship Church. So that sign is one of the flashing, you know, record your speed and whatnot. It's big. Unfortunately, where it is placed currently is marring, I believe, and several of us believe, the streetscape that if you are on the street looking up the hill at Old Ship, it's directly in your view. So it's like we would have to actually change the town seal now to put a little, a little sign right there almost. Anyway, we would just appreciate if you would reconsider the position of that particular sign. Just, you know, thinking about just going a little further up or a little further down Main Street, just so it would not, we don't mar the streetscape. So, thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back.
Mark Lockland, 207 North Street. I want to thank the committee because 207 North Street, I'm also a very active walker. I walk all over town all the time. And the behavior of the drivers in town is horrendous. Number of people who don't stop at crosswalks is just scary. I saw an incident where I was stopped waiting for a young woman to jog her at where Beale, West and North meet. Five cars didn't stop, then a car passed me and almost hit her. But anything we can do to slow down traffic. But here's a concern. I live in North Street, seen crosswalks, bus, school buses don't stop for school buses, for me in the crosswalk. On Sunday morning at 7:30, I'm walking up to Tennis, a police car coming through, 33, 35, by the time it goes by, the speed limit. So I would ask the town, and so also town vehicles not stopping at crosswalks, please instruct the police cars to adhere to the traffic, the speed limit. Because if the police aren't doing it, how do you expect the general public to do it? A school bus, that's a very popular route for school buses, 35, 37, going into So I would ask the town to please instruct the town officials, the town trucks, buses, everything to adhere. And also to make an effort to stop for people in crosswalks.
Yes, thank you. All right, who am I missing? Do you want to come up, Terry?
Hi, Terry Granahan, 7 Cottage Street, but I also own 25 North Street. And I want to thank the select board here. I've been talking to Bill Ramsey for years about the speed on North Street and to Joe, and think that it's great that we addressed the issue because people go too fast. My issue is with the, and I made a sketch here to hand to the selectman, select board rather, and anyone else wants to see it as well. The historic, the historic building at 25 North Street, the sign is very hideous and unattractive. I know that's superficial, but however, it, how many, I ask anyone, would you like that sign in front of your house? And the answer would probably be no. Right, exactly right. So I think a better solution, and I think the select board is, you know, and someone else mentioned, putting it a sign near Stars. And there's a crosswalk right at Stars. Whether that's the right location or not, I'm not sure, but you could have a sign near 25 miles an hour, and also because when they get to 25 North Street, you have to step it on the gas even to get to 25 there. And I think that you could put a sign there, you know, prior to the crosswalks, you can see the crosswalks right here at Stars and Cottage Street and going across, it would slow people down, because that's really concerning, the pedestrians crossing at Stars across, they go from Cafe Tosca to Tosca. And you could actually have, instead of the speed limit sign, you could have an arrow pointing the sidewalk with the speed limit sign, it was, I think it would slow people down dramatically. And the other practical issue is at night, this sign, even at zero speeds, is flashing off of the white building at Cafe Tosca, the office building, and it's flashing into the property at 25 North Street and 23 North Street into the bedrooms. And it's just, I've had complaints from the tenants there, and I just, you know, respectfully request the town to consider a new location there that I think would be better. And just one last thing, I think putting things in the middle of the road, like they have at the post office, really slows down traffic. And I know those get moved around a lot, but you know, if that, you consider something like that, even halfway down North Street, and I've also suggested putting brick across in some areas, and I know somebody would actually pay for one of those with curbing each side and then brick there with it and, you know, slow it down, maybe two locations, maybe at the corner of North Street and maybe one near Cafe Tosca. And I think that would be a great solution, where you get that ripple effect when you drive over it. That's all I'm going to say. And thank you for your considerations, and I appreciate the select board for, you know, hearing all the different reasons and the historic nature of, keeping the historic nature of Hingham at the highest level and the streetscape as well. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. All right, who did I miss? Go ahead. Come on, Frank.
I am Frank Mellon, 182 North Street. We are the Samuel Lincoln Cottage that was hit two years ago in July, which took out, as many of you know, 18 feet of wall, destroyed most of the left half of the downstairs, and took about a year for us to put back together. So I will try to keep my emotions in check when I talk about this. But again, I really wanted to say two, three things. One, thank you for some of the options that you folks have put out to us tonight. I didn't really know how many of those options you might really be considering. We've talked after our accident to the Port Traffic Committee, several of whom are up there, and they're probably all rolling their eyes as we went through a number of meetings to talk about bike lanes. We certainly support bike lanes. There are some places that need no parking stripes. We support that. We've talked a little bit about raised sidewalks, et cetera, that some other folks here mentioned. I think the point is, we're really, really pro any and all options that you folks want to come up with. We, our house has been almost hit three other times. We've had five instances over 30-plus years where folks have rolled right in front of our house, two times, the most recent two years ago, when our house was actually hit. So we know the danger, the downtown area, this sidewalk situation downtown, many folks have mentioned it, I won't get into all the details, but I don't know how many times, taking my life in my hands trying to cross from the post office to Hennessy's or vice versa, or in front of the Square Cafe. Lastly, two quick things, the new flashers, we love, love the flasher on our street, North Street by our house, we're ecstatic about that. I don't know, we don't know as far as the placement of these, as some folks have said, the placement, maybe there's a better place, maybe there's a different design for those, it's more historically accurate. But my point is, while you're all going through that exercise, please, please leave the signs that are there in place. They're up, maybe they're not in the right spot, maybe there's a better spot for them, but it's sadly, it's not 1880 in downtown Hingham anymore. We don't have 10 mile an hour horse and buggies going down the street. Folks frequently don't pay attention to those signs. The flasher signs are a great first step, I do believe, they slow traffic. But say in our area, if folks, police or otherwise, want to do reviews downtown, say on a Friday night coming out of the square, or Monday through Friday in the morning going into the square, six or seven people blowing through there well over 26.8 miles an hour. And I would suggest that we just keep all the options open. We would love to help with any of those.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Deirdre?
Thank you, select board. Good evening, I'm Deirdre Anderson, 31 Oak Colony Road, but I'm speaking this evening as the executive director of the Hingham Historical Society, stewarding properties at 34 Main Street, the Hingham Heritage Museum, 21 Lincoln Street, the Old Ordinary, and 181 North Street, the national historic landmark Benjamin Lincoln House. Let me preface by saying I'm extremely sensitive to the idea of these signs in a historic district, but I also think we need to follow the lead of the professional traffic engineers. The traffic committee took amazing leadership on a downtown business safety zone. Having been intimately familiar with other traffic calming measures in town, namely the 3A project and the road diet, it was amazing to see the initiative the town took through the traffic committee, Sergeant Kilroy, JR Frye, when the Mellon's House was hit by a car at 182 North Street. The Hingham Historical Society experience over the last three years in leading tours and field trips gives us a unique perspective on the traffic problems in Hingham Square and the need for remediation. Our two newest employees commented in their first weeks of work how crazy people drive around here. Speed, disregard for crosswalks, and distracted drivers all contribute to a dangerous environment requiring vigilance. As you are all aware, a distracted driver drove into the historic Samuel Lincoln Cottage, car flipped in front of the Old Ordinary on Labor Day weekend, Square Cafe has been hit many times, Zona has been hit. Many of you have seen the Hingham Historical Society's new history cart, which we launched this summer. Our low-speed, street-legal, 25 mile per hour vehicle is an accessible way for residents and visitors to enjoy our tours of historic Hingham. Last month, we pulled out of the Old Ship Meeting House driveway after showing folks the bell tower, turned right onto Main Street heading north, and a driver sped past us on the right, on the right. So someone exiting their car, accessing the bank or the movie theater, could have gotten hit. As we prepare to open the Benjamin Lincoln House, which this town has a three-quarters of a million dollar investment in as a museum, and welcome increased tourism as the world commemorates the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution and America's 250th birthday, this town will benefit from traffic calming in Hingham Square. Let's take a deep breath, and perhaps we can consider these things until the behavior change as perhaps temporary measures, but we have to change the behavior. Because I think in time, what may be visibly offensive tonight, and this period as you get used to it, will help what I hope our community's highest priority is, which is keeping our neighbors and visitors safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn?
I'll be brief, because a lot of comments have already been made, but I'm Lynn Barclay.
Can you state your name and address?
What?
Just name an address, please.
Lynn Barclay, Levin Cottage Street. I'm speaking on behalf of the Hingham Downtown Association and the businesses. I first want to say thank you to the traffic committee, select board, and all that were involved in advancing the new speed limit in the downtown business district. Safety is our first and foremost, number one concern for the downtown community. This topic is discussed at every single one of our meetings. We have experienced everything from speeding downtown to people rolling through four-way stop sign intersections, a couple close misses of people getting hit, one of which was someone that I knew a couple weeks ago that was previously referenced, two separate instances to cars striking Cafe Tosca that Mr. Ramsey referenced, and also two cars striking Zona. We bring to your attention, we believe it's not a matter of if, but it's a matter of when that this will happen again. So it's for these reasons that we support the new speeding zone and the signage that's been installed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did I miss anybody in the room?
Gentleman in the back, can I have a hand?
Sorry, I can't see.
Terry, did you want to speak? I saw your hand go up.
I think that was in support. I wrote it down.
It was an emphasis, okay.
Any members of the public online that would like to make a comment? I can't see anyone, can you, Art?
No.
Okay.
Maybe encourage people to wave or use the...
Okay, if there are people on Zoom that would like to speak, if you can raise your hand, either physically or digitally, we'll give people a minute to register if you want to make a comment.
Hi, this is Sarah Abbott, I live at 146 Main Street. And just a couple of comments, I'd echo what some of the other folks said, but curious to know if there was any data collected on the cars that come down Lower Main Street in the evenings and overnight? Because I can hear them speeding. And while some people have slowed down during the day, nothing happens. Like I, I watch cars between 5:00 AM until, you know, 9, 10 o'clock at night when I'm back home, with the white blowing up and red consistently going over 25 miles an hour, and nothing is done about it. So I mean, while people will see it, I don't see a whole lot of actions changing, and I just want to know what the data says for the evenings, because I did hear that mentioned earlier. And I would also just like to echo the thought on the stop signs and pushing things back, maybe if the sign on Lower Main Street in front of the Old Ship Church is moved back by either the stop sign or just beyond St. John's, there was an accident not too long ago where someone came driving down Main Street and ran into a house on Lower Main, just past Water Street. If the sign was further up and cars were coming down, I think it could help in two ways. One, for cars that are traveling down Water Street, but also on Lower Main. I do love that they're, we're taking this seriously. There are a lot of children up and down Main Street all day long, and plenty of times people have almost been hit, myself included, as I cross up over Main. But I don't think it's preventing people from doing anything where it's currently located. It should be pushed back. And I know that police presence is hard to have there, but it would be great even if it was for an hour a day, so that someone gets a ticket and they can tell their presence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Do you want to, do you have anything you want to add?
Just a brief comment. I think, at least what I've heard this evening, is that inaction is not acceptable, that safety is a concern, it's a priority, that it's important that we consider options. I know other communities, for example, Wellesley has focused on speed tables as a way of addressing this, and I just want to make sure that we do look at other options so that we come up with an effective program. But the concern of our residents for the safety, their safety, their children's safety, visitor's safety, has clearly been heard, and we intend to act. Thank you.
Excellent. Bill?
Just briefly, I want to thank everybody for their comments and their input. We've also received quite a few emails on the topic as well, which has been helpful in our deliberative process here. Some residents I have mentioned the need for crosswalk safety. We're going, once we figure this one out, that's going to be next. I agree with many of the comments that are not, that we need to look at crosswalks in the downtown corridor, particularly the one that connects post office to Hennessy's and some of the other areas also. But lastly, I want to point out one other thing, too. This conversation we're having about safety in the downtown corridor is not just going to be about downtown, it's part and parcel of a larger conversation about making our entire community safe. All right? So folks that don't live in downtown but have expressed safety concerns, certainly to me over the years, I'm sure to my colleagues, we're going to get to you as well. All right? We're going to look at intersections on High Street that are problematic, other intersections. So I want people to know that we're taking this issue seriously, we're going to continue to do it, and Madam Chair, are we going to put this on next week's agenda, or what's the timeline, so people are aware of it?
Yes, thank you. So I would like to put this on next week's agenda, we will be meeting next Tuesday. We wanted to take a vote on whether to remove the signs or move the signs. So I am hopeful that we will have more data from JR Frye and the consultant that he's working with on other alternative locations. My feeling at this point is, this is a good interim solution. We did commit to having a decision by the end of this month, and I would stick with that. And I, so I'd like to consider for next week, alternate locations for the feedback signs. But I am looking at this more holistically. I want, this is not a one-and-done conversation. We will, this is an iterative process in my mind. I do want to look at other solutions. I think speed is certainly an issue, and we've heard that this evening. I think visibility is an issue, the crosswalks, the visibility for crosswalks is an issue. Traffic patterns are issues, you know, related to stop signs and behavior. So I think there's, there's more to look at, and so it's not just one solution. I don't think one sign is the solution for this whole situation. So again, I see this as an iterative process. I would like to have an update on the speed data on a monthly basis so that we can continue to track that at all hours of the day. I don't think it's limited to daytime, but certainly we want to be sure about that. And the data that was presented this far was literally from Thursday to Monday, right? We've been working pretty quickly, so that's not a complete data set by any, any means. So I would like to continue to evaluate that on a monthly basis as well, and adjust as necessary. So thank you all for participating, thank you for your feedback. I know not everyone's completely satisfied with the current situation, please be patient. This is what I see as an interim solution to an issue, and we will continue to work on it to get to the right solution for downtown and the entire community.
Liz, I think Andrea Young's raising her hand.
Oh, Andrea. Andrea Young, did you want to make a comment?
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. I just, to your comment about considering other locations, who will be involved in that? Or how will that be done? Will that be...
So JR is working with the consultant, Sip NS, as well as, I'm sure he will be connecting with you, Andrea, as well as Sergeant Kilroy. And we have gathered and all of the citizen feedback as well. Obviously, we'll have the recorded minutes from tonight, but we have compiled all of the feedback that has been sent to us via email. So that will all be part of the consideration process.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if there are other questions or comments, please do email us. We are reading all of it and cataloging it in terms of the different issues and different ideas. So, thank you.
Well, before, before everyone leaves, just so you know, the next item on our agenda is cellular service in Hingham. So we know that that's also, also a concern.
So that will all be part of the consideration process.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if there are other questions or comments, please do email us. We are reading all of it and cataloging it in terms of the different issues and different ideas. So, thank you.
Well, before everyone leaves, just so you know, the next item on our agenda is cellular service in Hingham. So we know that that's also, also a concern. So stay.
It's an exciting night. Thank you all for being here. Thank you. You, too. Exhibit one through five. I knew it.
What?
Nice, Clark. Always good to see you, buddy. Well, maybe, I think we've got another agenda.
We do have to finish the meeting. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right.
We've got some visually.
Excellent.
Very good.
Where would you like us to put these?
Maybe up there, so we can maybe get them on camera?
Yes.
They need to sort of go next to each other, right? Maybe? It's big.
Talk into the mic and then show it.
Would you like us up there?
I just want to make sure it's on the camera. Yeah.
It'll be a big reveal.
It's a big reveal.
Mark?
How are you?
Can you move that a little bit over so we can... Mark? Mark?
Sir?
Can you move that a little bit that way so we can...
Which way?
Not towards us, just that way. That's, okay. Good. Thanks. Okay, got it.
Okay. Thank you for the visuals.
We provided a screen.
Okay, excellent. So next on the agenda is cellular service improvement presentation. Cellular service and the lack of it is certainly an important issue that the town and the select board is very concerned with from a public safety perspective as well as an economic development perspective. Certainly, we are seeing bad cell service across town, but mainly in the downtown area and at the high school and the middle school. So you can imagine that poses a public safety and security issue for our children as well as an economic issue for our downtown businesses. So we've asked Mark Cullings and Judy Sneath and the citizen group to come in and present their findings. We are grateful for you working with us, thinking a little bit outside of the box here, to come to some solution. I will ask Art Robert, Assistant Town Administrator, to present the status of the work that the town has been doing, and then we'll ask you to present what you're doing and what the next steps are.
Sure. Thank you. And I'll do my best to keep this brief. My goal here is just to provide a quick overview of town efforts, which have been ongoing for some time. Clearly, cell service was brought, the poor quality of cell service was really brought to us by many residents in the spring. But I think we've recognized poor service as an issue and have been engaging with carriers and service providers for some time. What I hope we can do here is just show, provide a foundation of information, give you a sense of what our approach has been, which has really been to figure out how to encourage the markets to work, the private sector, service providers to provide better service to their customers. But I want to let you know that along the way, that we've learned some other things. And I think first and foremost, from our conversations, we understand this to be substantially a Hingham problem. And we've talked with our counterparts in nearby communities, and we've heard some issues about cell service. But our counterparts are not learning that serious cell service deficiencies exist in nearby communities, Rockland, Norwell, Situate. Also, you know, from an economic development perspective, recognizing that poor cell service in the square, which we have many small businesses, is an important location, hasn't really bubbled up as a priority or as an issue with the South Shore Chamber of Commerce. I'm not sure if that's a communication issue, but it might be another indicator that the challenge that we're wrestling with is special and limited. And I think because the town isn't a service provider, you know, we can't have direct influence or direct outcomes, but there are ways that we can encourage better service. And certainly, one approach is to look for ways to partner with providers through providing sites for locating infrastructure. I'll touch on that a little bit more shortly. And also, being a predictable and trustable partner in the permitting process. Hingham has, sets high standards, affects all forms of development, including cell infrastructure site. Just to set the table a little bit, I just wanted to point out where our significant infrastructure is in Hingham today, based on, primarily on building permit data. Seven locations arrayed from the shipyard in the northwest to 100 Sharp Street, you know, south of Route 3. There's one site at 1 Lincoln Street that's not listed or shown here. It's permitted, but it's not an active site. And I just want to point out that in this mix of sites, there's a combination of structures. We have a few towers, such as at 100 Sharp Street. We have a couple of monopoles, which is essentially a cylinder pointing straight up in the air. The most visible example is at 266 Wyden. And from a permit perspective, there are other approaches that are called host structures. For example, everybody knows the chimney at 9 Shipyard, as well as a church steeple, such as at 3 Elm Street. Taking an approach to encouraging our private sector service providers to step up, over time, several of us, Bill, Ramsey, Tom Mayo, and myself, have had opportunities to engage with representatives from cell service providers, the big three, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile, as well as what I call cell infrastructure providers, such as Centerline and Crown Castle. Those kinds of companies, they don't deliver the service directly, but what they do is, in effect, create hotel space, meaning they build infrastructure with the goal of attracting tenants like AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, and others. And for the major service providers, companies like Centerline and Crown Castle can take the first step and provide spaces into which, you know, some of these major providers can drop into without a big upfront investment. The chart here shows a number of different sites that we advanced with these cell service providers and infrastructure providers, you know, through what I would call business development conversations. Reaching out to executives, asking them about their goals for Hingham, expressing our interest as a community to engage as a partner and look for win-win situations, suggesting a number of town-owned sites in areas where we understand service to be inadequate as a place to cite infrastructure. In those conversations, I think we got a lot of interest in principle, but when looking at these town-owned sites, which range from, you know, the bathing beach in the northwest to the central fire station in the library at 66 Levitt Street in the southeast, we heard different kinds of feedback, ranging from their service is good in the given location, the proposed locations are too close to existing antennas or other infrastructure, or locations that we're offering. And we started by offering rooftops, not necessarily saying, hey, here's some land, tell us how big you can build something. The feedback we got was essentially, we weren't able to deliver enough height for the providers, the cell service providers or the infrastructure providers to build something that would have enough height to project radio waves at distances that made sense to them. Along the way, you know, we heard a lot of concern expressed, not about residents being able to talk to each other, not about businesses to talk to customers and close deals, but just the basic questions of people not feeling comfortable about their being able to reach a first responder if there was a need. So the town did invest a fair amount of effort into drilling into this. And that was conducted in partnership with our police department, our fire department, and our regional dispatch organization, the Shrek. On hearing those kinds of concerns expressed, working with those three partners, we invested some effort into looking at locations shown on this map here and conducting a survey of our own. And we found a few things. One, that at these sites, ranging from downtown to the high school to the Bear Cove Park entrance area, that all three service, all three major carriers could be found to generate service. And at those locations, we could place voice calls to 911, and we could also complete text to 911 calls. So recognizing there's concern out there, but we found that there is certainly capability to reach 911 at a number of important sites spread across town. Another piece that we learned along the way that's important to share is that regardless of who your carrier is for your phone, if you place a 911 call, it will be picked up by the nearest cell antenna regardless of carrier. So if you may be concerned about your company's service, but if you're located next, near an antenna operated by another provider, it's going to pick up your 911 call and direct it. The third piece, given all of this, you know, we concluded in conversations with our regional dispatch, that it made sense for them to do some outreach to remind the community that even if you can't reach, but reach 911 by voice, text to 911 is a viable option.
I didn't know that.
I didn't know that either.
Yeah. So just thinking ahead, as I said before, we had conversations with cell service providers and the infrastructure providers. I think we established a rapport. I think they understand our interest in improving service. I think they understand the town's intent to be a trusted partner to find a path forward in ways that make sense. And what we learned about potential infrastructure is summarized here on this chart. Now, some of this, I think the community will know about. For example, if you look at the southwest corner of this map, where there are two small cell locations, you know, that's Fort Hill Road or Fort Hill Street. AT&amp;T has two small cell installations in the permitting process. And if you look to the northeast of this map at 30 Green Street, Verizon is currently in the process to permit small cell antenna structures on the building they own at that address. There's a third small cell, if you look in the northwest corner. In conversations with AT&amp;T, we understand they have an intent to drop another small cell structure. Couldn't get like a specific address, but they did say along 3A. And in the center of this map, you'll see Monopole with a question mark. That is a site, that's located at our DPW. We've been in conversations for some time with Verizon about the possibility of locating a Monopole structure at the DPW site. We also think that there are other town-owned properties nearby that could also work. What I want to point out, just for awareness, if you look at the southeast corner of this map, you'll see Hingham Center location with a question mark. I can tell you, and I'm sure all of you have this experience, that cell service here is not good. Cell service at the high school is not good. We certainly heard from many people that in Hingham Center generally, cell service is not good. The service providers and the infrastructure providers are interested in citing something in the Hingham Center area. I dropped this pin at 339 Central, which is the central fire station. I'm not saying that's the location, but they would like to do something, they would like to see something in that area to fill gaps that I think we all recognize. So with that, I just wanted to share what we've been working on, and I'm sure that there's a lot that we don't know, there's a lot that we can learn from efforts that other folks in the community have been investing in. I'm certainly interested in learning more.
Yes, excellent. Thank you, Art, and thank you, Bill and Tom Mayo, for his efforts, too. I know that a lot of people have been working on this, and we've been talking about this for a while. So it's nice to see progress a little bit and keep moving. So go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm Beth Rice. I live at 12 Lafayette Avenue here in town. And thank you so much. It was great to hear all of that. We're super interested. We are a small band of frustrated but concerned and optimistic citizens who would love to continue to learn more about the problem and the solutions. But it will come as no surprise that people in Hingham are frustrated by cell service. I have been elected to be our spokesperson tonight, but my committee is for the most part is sitting here in the front, Justin Aborn and Mark Cullings, Julie Donovan, Ben Lee, Bruce Rabo, Bill Roof, Ron Sherwood, and Judy Sneath. So I wanted to introduce all of us. And thank you very much for allowing us to be on the agenda tonight. We appreciate the chance to speak. And so again, you know, it is not a surprise that everybody nods when you say how frustrating the cell service in Hingham is. We teamed up to just really try to take the first step towards learning more about it. And we're going to tell you a little bit about that tonight, very briefly. And our objective is really, maybe we can continue to learn more about it. Perhaps we can help, and perhaps the community at large. I think people are very willing to try to figure out how they can help with this. We're all customers of these providers, and perhaps there's something as a community that we can do together to try to move the needle on this as well. So we're very glad to hear all of the good work that's been going on at the town level. It's fascinating, and thank you for sharing that. So what have we done so far? We also have talked with some of the provider, providers, people who we knew or people who we could network with. It was interesting. We've talked to some telecommunication thought leaders, as well as some local political business leaders about the issue and the challenges, just trying to understand it a little bit. We know there's a lot we don't know. And we also did something that was super interesting, and it sounds like you all have done as well at the town level. We conducted our own little audit of the service here in Hingham. And Ben, if you could talk to us a little bit about that?
You can.
We put it up together on a large map that shows the town, and then the call-out map is downtown specifically.
Would it help to put on the screen?
We do have it, yes.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Art. My name's Ben Lee at 5 Ward Street. I'm so excited to have seen everything that you've done so far. Art, that was a great presentation. One of the things you can see that we've done is we've conducted our own mobile task force, so to speak, and we've gone around with our own devices, leveraging a very specific speed test app to go through and with all three of the major carriers, find locations on, within Hingham that definitely need help. Some of them are just abysmal. On the maps, both maps, you'll see small tiny dots, and then you'll also see larger icons. The larger icons are the emphasized bad areas, with each of the vendors being color-coded to represent their portions. What we found is very, very similar to what you've already shown us, Art, that there are many areas within town, whether it's topographical problems, or it's, you know, density of vegetation, or whatever the causes may be, there are many, many places in town where just driving through the neighborhood, you might get disconnected from a call. That can be very disrupting to me, and it can take my focus off the street for a minute when I'm trying to figure out, can you still hear me? No, no, you can't hear me. And so not only does that make working within the town difficult, but I do know without a question that it can distract from driving. So add that into the mix that, as you can see in downtown, all of the carriers have places within the downtown area that where either they can't connect at all, although we didn't try 911 tests, I'm glad you guys have validated that. But being able to send information, receive information, make a call to a family member to validate, you know, does this color look good on me, or what have you, right? These are real problems that affect all of us every time we're in downtown. Thankfully, the town building here has public Wi-Fi. Otherwise, my phone wouldn't work. And, you know, a few select people in downtown have guest Wi-Fi, making it very, very, you know, helpful for their patrons. But everybody else is really left high and dry. And personally, I love this town so much, but I can't share how much I love the town until I get home and I'm back on Wi-Fi. So I hope we can do something as a community to fix that.
Thanks, Beth. So, you know, I think we, here's how to summarize. We learned certainly that there...
So I hope we can do something as a community to fix that.
Thanks, Ben. So, you know, I think we, here's, here's how to summarize. We learned certainly that there, that we have a real problem here in town. And we also learned that fixing it isn't going to be easy, right? And we realized that local and state government have very limited ability to really fix this, right? This is a provider issue, and we certainly heard that. We learned and have learned more tonight that there are some very encouraging improvement projects underway, and that's great. We also learned importantly that the providers, and we heard this consistently, they want to deliver great service. They don't want unhappy customers, right? So there's a lot of goodwill on this whole problem, the town wants to fix it, the people want to fix it, everybody we've talked to wants to fix it, the providers are very emphatic that they want to deliver good service. So we were encouraged by that. And we really just came here tonight honestly to introduce ourselves, to raise our hand and say, we've done a little bit of learning about this problem. We're very quick to acknowledge that we don't completely understand it. We are delighted to learn more about what's underway here in town to fix it. And we'd like to continue to learn more from, from all of you and from Art, and also maybe just continue to learn how we might be able to mobilize both our little committee, and we're happy to work hard at this if it's helpful, but also the town at large through a variety of communication things that we potentially could do to mobilize and activate our town to try to get behind fixing this. So it seems like it's, we ended our first phase of this in a very positive way. We really learned a lot. We met our objectives. We're very appreciative of being here tonight, and we hope we can continue to be part of the solution. So thank, thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Thank you, Beth, and thank you, Ben, and thank you to the entire committee for all of the work that you've done. I think it will take all of us to be noisy and persistent with this issue. As you mentioned, we don't have complete control over it. We can't just make it happen, so it's extremely frustrating. But I think it will take all of us, again, as you said, to move the needle. So we will continue the work on our end, and Art certainly is your direct contact. I want to make sure there's an open line of communication, so we're not doing things kind of working against each other or even redundant. We don't want to waste your time, but certainly appreciate your expertise and your connections to help move this along.
And you can see together, our whole group, how many places we tested and how, you know, and the app was super interesting and very informative and instructive, very easy to do. And it was actually, once we all got started, it was kind of fascinating. We drove all around town and stopped and tested it. So we can, we're happy to leave these behind to, as a possibly helpful tool to look at, you know, over time, kind of where some of these issues really are here in town.
Excellent. Thank you. I know there were some citizens' petitions going around as well. Do we know the status of that, or if that data, were those results ever shared with the providers? Do you know, Bill or Art?
How we forwarded it to them?
We did, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And has this sort of information already gone to the providers?
This is the first we've shared it tonight. And this is all been done in the last, maybe, this is all within the last probably two to three weeks.
Okay, excellent. Excellent. Bill, I know you've been working on this. Do you have any questions or, or do you want to go, Julie? Did you want to add something?
I have a question.
Absolutely. Do you mind coming up here, just so we, everybody can hear?
Hi, thank you. Julie Donovan, 18 Malcolm. And it's been such a pleasure working with this committee. I wish my professional life was as organized as working with this committee. All right, let me ask you, I guess if you don't mind directing you as like a central point of contact on the town, is there anything our committee can do to help you? We meet every Monday, believe it or not, at 10:30, some in person, some on a Zoom call. I'm not trying to create anyone, like a second full-time job for anybody. We really are here in the best interest of like, of the community, and people heard we were coming tonight, and we could have brought a crowd, but we said, we're not ready for that. We just, we are, we're truly here to say, how can we help? Sometimes if you block and tackle, like you take this work stream, you take this work stream, and then we all meet on some regular basis, I don't know what that looks like, but that's, I thought I would ask.
Well, that's, that's a big offer. I certainly appreciate that. I think at this point, knowing that we have options to offer, we've talked about the possibility of just putting them out, out to bid to see what kind of response we get, just to kind of make it clear that the town is interested and is looking for, for service. I guess the other thing I think about just very broadly, you know, just reflecting in my own experience as an economic developer, you know, the permitting process is, is challenging in many communities. Hingham has high standards, and as projects go forward, they benefit from hearing the whole, the full range of community perspectives.
Okay, so it sounds like then that's where community action could be supportive, right? In the permit process, if there's enough
Yes.
Voice. Okay, awesome. We love action items.
Yeah, I think it might be worth just having an offline conversation, just about what other paths might be possible. You've had your conversations, we've had ours.
We love that.
There may be some options we haven't really talked about.
Just a recommendation for the town, I don't know the best way to communicate this, I think the Hingham Journal, I think most people get the Journal and at least read the front page, that the community knows these conversations are going on. I think that would help. I think people would be relieved, like yay, there's people meeting on this, and there's a plan, maybe not at the speed we'd all like to see, but I think that might make the broader community just feel like, yay, I didn't, I thought, you know, I thought I was the only one who was complaining, so. You're happy, you're invited to join our Monday 10:30 AM meetings.
And there are cookies.
Oh. And maybe my last ask is, what is the best way for our committee to communicate with you?
It seems if we meet occasionally face-to-face, that might be the best way to handle things.
We'll take you up on that.
Emails are great, texts, we're always doing that, but, you know, with, with COVID and whatnot, we've been hiding behind our technology for several years.
So we have this in-person meeting at 10:30 every Monday at my office in the Old Town Hall downtown. I can't promise that your cell phone will work particularly well, but we're very hospitable. We'll give you a coffee. And people do come in via Zoom, but we also try to come in person. So that's a standing invitation. If you would ever like to join us, that would be great. Give us a little heads up, we'll make sure we're there. But maybe that would be a good first step.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. Thank you, Art. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And I will just say, Julie submitted a talent bank application and offered to be on this committee that we didn't have yet, and so we, okay, okay. Now we're gonna, yeah, now you're, now you're in. So thank you. But seriously, in all seriousness, thank you for taking in the initiative, seeing an issue and connecting. Good, good. Mark, did you want to add something?
Quick comment. Mark Cullings, 44 Spring Street. All of this started with social media, really, and the Downtown Association. The Down, as Lynn has pointed out, the shop owners, the business people downtown were just at their wits' end. And, and social media exploded a few months ago, and with the petition, which was directed at a specific carrier and generated over 1,000 responses in a very short period of time. And it just showed, showed me that there were a lot of rumors, innuendos, and nobody in town really knew what was going on. So our intent was to shine a light on the subject and try to get the facts out there. The town is doing way more than I think the general public knows, and we appreciate it. And so we need to keep the pressure on. This is our first step. We don't intend to give it up there until, you know, we want to see a positive outcome on this, and I think the residents of Hingham all do too. And we know as well as it's a shared issue with our surrounding towns, that's not, it's not unique to Hingham, but, so we can, we can, we want to help. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Go ahead, come on up.
Justin A. Born to Riverview Road. Thank you very much for having us tonight. I was so pleased to hear that 911 would work with a text message as well. As I said, that was news to me. I know a lot about telecommunications, but I didn't know that. So I think publicizing that somehow would be a tremendous public service. And I would also point out that regardless of how well 911 may or may not work for any particular provider, our voice call experiences will depend a lot on which service provider you happen to be a subscriber of. So I think we have to bear that in mind, that it's, it's not just about 911, as wonderful that, as that is to hear, is, does this look good on me is a very important call to make. I will, I've been authorized by my compatriots here to ask a particular question, which is a little too narrow for the topic writ large. But I noticed in this August, up on Turkey Hill, that there's an Osprey nest up in the cell tower. And I can imagine if we, one of our service providers wanted to give better service to my street, they might want, need to climb that tower to re-aim an antenna or something, and boy, I wouldn't want to do it if there's an Osprey up there. So I would ask, I don't know whether anybody would have an answer tonight, but is there a process for relocating an Osprey nest if that does impede our private service providers? And with, I'll just leave that question and sit down.
Art will climb up.
Where's Leslie Badger?
We need Officer Badger.
Joe, aren't you running for real?
I don't know that.
This is a real challenge.
Clark Frazier, 50 Monty Brier Circle. I've sort of wandered into this by accident because I was, wanted to beat up the electric company for not fixing the bricks on North Street. But while I'm here, we need more Osprey nests. Now, what Town of Hull did, they put a separate pole up near their switchyard, right across the, you know, the narrow part of the river where the old railroad viaduct was. It seemed like if we could have an Osprey pole program, and you could also then put maybe a smaller, some fill-in cell things on it, because I don't think they have to go up there that often, or maybe they can go up in the winter. But we need more Osprey nests, the ones that I see out on the river. There's only one now left, and it's in Hull. There aren't any in Hingham that I know of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mark, do you want to come up and then someone online?
Mark Pontingaro, 10 Cliff Road. Technical question that maybe Mr. Robert knows. I don't have a telecommunication background, so I'm really curious. If I go into other towns around and am able to get 5G service, I can't get it anywhere in Hingham. My understanding is that 5G is more small, something that could be located on telephone poles, and maybe I'm wrong about that, but I know you, in your presentation, you had a couple of small cells you had. Is that directly related to 5G, and is there opportunity to expand that because they're not as intrusive?
As explained to us by one of our infrastructure providers, a small cell installation is about, is about voice, it's not about data. The data's coming from the larger installations.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and as an aside, the Osprey do move out in the wintertime, so if somebody wants to move a nest, that'd be the time.
Good to know. Martha? Would you like to speak?
Yeah, this is Ryan Carr, 197 North Street. My firm actually invests in some of the telecom infrastructure providers, like the Crown Castle in the world, that actually build these towers. And I was just curious, it sounds like you guys have done a lot of good work here. I was wondering if the town or the community action team has gotten the search rings yet from the carriers? Because generally, when they look to develop new towers, they have concentric circles called search rings as to where they're looking to permit, and that can then tell us, you know, where, where they would like to put a tower and how we can maybe assist them in permitting in those locations? And if not, I'd be happy to reach out to my contacts to see if I could figure out where AT&amp;T and Verizon are looking to put search rings or have search rings out to providers in the, in the neighborhood.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
You can take my place.
I think you've just been recruited for the committee.
We like it.
Did you want to answer that, Art?
I will try.
Okay.
My impression is that information is proprietary. We've had, in our conversations, we've been able to get to different levels of interest. And the highest level of interest has been in the Hingham Center area. I think that that's an indication that we're probably, that location broadly is within the search area of one or more of the carriers. If you can, if you can provide additional classified information, I think we'd welcome that.
Yes, we would.
Yep, no problem. We do some digging, and if somebody, I'm happy to provide my information offline, and I can follow up with folks, but.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, did you want to add anything?
Really, thank you. I mean, this is, you have downplayed the importance of your committee. Former Select Board Member, former Planning Board Member.
Very illustrious.
People who really care about this community, and you're, and it shows, so we really thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Is there any technology for signal boosting that the town could purchase that would enhance signals that are currently available? Have we looked at that?
It's not a question we've explored directly. We are aware that the carriers have mobile devices that can, can add capacity at a given location at a given time, that they're designed for events or like emergency response. I'm not sure that there's anything specific that the town could provide in terms of like a permanent installation like that.
Good question.
So the question about search rings and placement of cell towers is something that came frequently before the zoning board, when I was on the zoning board. And so that information was presented as part of the public process, but only when a carrier wanted to actually have a, an antenna installed. And when that happened, there was a fair amount of community resistance. They do not want the cell tower in their backyard. And so there was a question about whether or not there were, a signal was sent at the time about, is Hingham a friendly place to have cell service? So that's something we should, we may want to look at, but in conjunction with that, has anyone looked at whether or not we should be revising or reviewing our bylaws, particularly the zoning bylaws, in terms of where is appropriate to allow cell towers, and about the process for that approval?
You've been working with Emily Wentworth. She's been involved in those conversations, correct?
Well, mostly from, let's respond to whatever comes forward to us. We haven't had, we haven't gotten down into the detailed conversation about, why aren't you here? What's the obstacle? What are the three things that if the town could address would move you, move you carrier from inertia to construction? That's something we can certainly look at as, to provide as input to consider for zoning changes.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Bruce Rabuffo, 1 Dwyggen's Path. Thank you for allowing us tonight. Art, as luck would have it, I'm having lunch tomorrow with a bunch of Verizon people who, who happens to be the main provider in Hingham. In fact, getting some of our data was difficult because we do not have in this town a lot of T-Mobile or AT&amp;T or, I'm missing, or Xfinity. And you can go on, there's a whole bunch. So that's another issue the public could help us on in, as we collect data where, to identify the weak spots. Regarding 5G, which as Justin will explain, is we are in transition in this town, we are experiencing what the city of New York did when cellphone service was launched. And in New York City, 5G antennas exist on every corner. I don't think, given the stop sign discussion we just had, I don't think that would be appropriate. However, that, it's going to come to that. I don't want to scare you. In 1908, and dot, I wasn't there. In 1908, there was a guy named Theodore Vale who woke up one morning in Wall Street, and he saw all these wires all over the place, but they were independent companies connecting to independent subscribers. And the problem that created, obviously, you, depending on which subscriber you belong to, was whom you could call. We are not at that stage here, but we're getting there as this expands. This will be a long-term capital problem for the providers. And I'm surprised that you didn't mention South And I'm surprised that you didn't mention South Shore Chamber is not looking at this. My contacts say they are. So if you could review with them, Art, that would be very helpful. Okay? So thank you, and I'm glad I'm not sitting there.
Come on up, John.
Hi, I'm John Rice, 12 Lafayette Avenue as well. And I'm also a member of the Cable Advisory Committee, as you know. And just as a little points that people know, as we were negotiating our last contract with Verizon, they insisted on a three-year out on their five-year contract deal with us. Now, the reason that they're doing that, according to our counsel, is that they want to take and make 5G video out. So they would get rid of their cable connection that they have with 40% of our citizens, and they would replace it with 5G. So in order to do that, they're going to have to do what you're suggesting. So that is something that they asked for in that contract, they might have the intent to do that. It's getting tested around the country. I think New York is one of those places. So that, that might be something that's going to affect how 5G gets delivered as well.
Yes. Thank you. Bill, did you want to add anything?
I do, yeah. I want to add a couple things. Well, first of all, I can assure you, everybody here tonight, everybody watching at home, that there's no people who want to solve this problem more than us. And we're going to continue to get after it. We've heard from residents, we've seen the comments on social media, and we're going to continue to get after it until the problem's solved. I will note, as Art kind of pointed out, some of the efforts, somehow I got appointed to be the point here. I don't really know how I did, but hey.
It's a utility in our minds.
Yeah, happy to take that challenge. So we have met with a certain provider several times. There's been at least three meetings. Over the course of those meetings, we have offered that provider some pretty good alternatives to addressing their problem. We talked about the fact that a year ago, AT&amp;T came to us, asked us for granted locations to put smaller cell towers on poles on Fort Hill Street. We moved that as expeditiously as possible. We got those voted in the same, probably the same week they were asked for, and we offered that to this provider. We've offered medium-range towers in some other parts of town that might solve a problem in what are referred to as dead zones or dead spots. But the provider has yet to act. So we are trying to create conditions to allow the problem to be solved, but ultimately it's on the provider to move forward. And I think, you know, I had a, I had a great coffee with Mark and Bruce a couple weeks ago. Thank you for that. It was very helpful, particularly Bruce's background in this industry. And Bruce was right. Bruce said to me, you know, we got to get their attention. We got to do more to get their attention to address this problem. So we're going to keep doing that. I talked to Art a couple days ago about reaching out to Congressman Lynch's office. You know, this is, this is a federally regulated industry, so maybe we can get a contact with the congressman's office or one of our senators to help us as well. But we're going to continue to make noise, and we'll continue to get after it until we have solved the problem to the best of our abilities.
Great. Good.
Excellent. Thank you. Other questions or comments from anybody in the room? Any questions or comments from members of the public online? Okay, excellent. Well, thank you for the presentation. Thank you to the committee for your wonderful work.
Thank you.
Certainly, Art, if you'll be the contact, and we'll be in touch about the meetings and next steps. Thank you. Moving on, we good? All right, next on the agenda are appointments. I believe we have one appointment this evening.
I would make a motion to appoint David Allison to the Community Preservation Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is public comment. There any comments from members of the public? On things we haven't discussed yet.
We've heard a lot, all right.
We've discussed everything.
I know. This was democracy at its best tonight. So thank you to everybody that participated. Next on the agenda are town administrator and Select Board reports. Art?
Sure. I have three items. First and foremost, I just want to follow up on an approved special one-day license that Town Administrator Tom Mayo reviewed. It's for a Hingham Youth Football Fall Fundraiser Saturday, set for Saturday, the 23rd, with no rain date, located at 18 Shipyard Drive, 6 to 8, excuse me, 6 to 10 p.m. Estimated attendance of about 125, and a police detail is required for that event.
Okay.
If I could, I just want to share a reminder regarding a blood drive we're conducting with the American Red Cross here at Town Hall next Tuesday, the 26th, from 11:00 to 4:00, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the senior center. Appointments are still available and would encourage folks to call 1-800-RED-CROSS to schedule an appointment if they're so inclined. One additional item I'd like to share is that we're moving forward on our ADA Self-Assessment and Transition Plan. Next Wednesday, the 27th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., we will be conducting with, through the Commission on Disabilities, a hearing on our draft plan, essentially our findings and some recommendations on the path forward. And we're certainly looking for any kind of public input, opportunity to answer questions, all of which would help strengthen the final plan that we will be advancing to the Select Board. That meeting will be conducted entirely by Zoom, and to get information about the details, please go to the Self-Assessment webpage, which is hingham-ma.gov/ada.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Just wanted to mention that Tom, our town administrator, sends his regrets. He's homesick this evening, so that's why he wasn't here. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Just wanted to point out that on Sunday, I attended Hingham Congregational Church's 175th Jubilee. It was really just a wonderful event and a wonderful celebration of a church that has done so much for our community and so much for social justice, and I wanted to congratulate the entire church on 175 years.
Excellent. Thank you. Joe?
Nothing.
Okay. I just want to report that the Sustainable Budget Task Force met on September 14th after a little summer hiatus, and the group will continue to meet monthly to move forward on the recommendations in that report. I will be attending a library trustees meeting tomorrow night on the 20th, and just want to remind people that Friday, September 22nd, is Veterans Suicide and Remembrance Day. That's it.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Rule call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned at 8:19 p.m.